Good evening, everyone. This is, uh, welcome to our township meeting. We'll have a caucus meeting this evening, first, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Adequate notice in this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll have pledge to our flag.
Pledge and leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, um, this is, this is really important, and we try to honor and, uh, support our local businesses here, especially our mom and pops. Uh, we had our Lacy Day event, uh, well advertised, uh, thanks to all of our committeemen up here and of course, Veronica and, uh, of course, uh, Rita McDonald's wife, who's been very instrumental in the one-fiftieth. Um, we had a little bit of a snafu with some food trucks, and we knew we were gonna get between two and four thousand people, and so we, we're, we had a mad scramble, uh, to try to find, uh, some food vendors, namely pizza, so we had some regulatory hurdles that have since been approved. Uh, but we, we reached out, and thanks to Veronica and, uh, James Wyland, uh, who does yeoman's work in our town with our kids, uh, and, well, I guess a little, a little tiny bit, I say me, a little tiny bit, I happened to be at Tomato's Pizzeria, getting a Russian grandma. For the record, I do not have a Russian grandmother. It's a type of pizza.
No, it's a Chinese.
Well, maybe it's a good thing I didn't hear that. Appreciate that, Rita McDonald. So, I, I'm over there, and, uh, at Tomato's Pizzeria, right here on Lacy Road, gentleman happens to be with us tonight with his sons, um, whom my daughter did watch on at the, uh, summer camp this summer. Um, she had, she, she very much enjoyed that, and, uh, so I wanted, wanted to thank publicly, uh, gentleman, the owner proprietor, who's been there in our town, is a businessman. He brought about eighty-five pies over there, and people were able to, to eat and enjoy, and because he bailed us out, and thanks to the, the thoughtfulness of our administrator, Larry, we have something here.
Why don't you come on up?
Come on up.
Bring your family.
So you can hang that in your, your pizzeria.
Those of us on T T line, it says Tomato's Saves the Day, and basically with our one-fiftieth logo, Lacy Day, twenty twenty-one.
Oh, that's awesome.
So I'm gonna go down here, hand it to you.
Get some pictures.
We've got some pictures.
It was the light ring, you know? He gave us the, he saved us.
Yeah, and I think, listen, I'm here taking the picture, now here comes the committee man. This is on behalf of all of us.
He's gonna take a picture.
He's on behalf of everybody.
Come on, kids, get up there with dad.
But I tell you, if you wanna cheat on, I'm telling you, if you wanna cheat on your diet, I know I'm supposed to have about twenty favorite pizzerias, but Tomato's is, uh, Tomato's tough act to follow.
Here's a grandma.
Go, we want to say pizza. One, two, three, pizza. All right, there we go.
Just wanted to share that with me. I'll make sure it's on our Facebook and website.
A little bit of Russian grandma.
It is the best.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So, that night, it was the Friday night before Lacy Day, uh, I was out, I headed out for dinner with my wife and some friends, and all of a sudden, my phone rings, and it's Mr. White. And I've known him, I've known him, and I've never known him to be as stressed as he was about not hitting the food trucks. And I said to him, I said, and I'll never forget it, my wife gave me that money. I said, I don't care what you gotta do. Do what you gotta do. If we have to pay a fine, we'll pay the fine. But we have to have food for Lacy Day. And he's like, what? And I said, I don't care. You gotta pay a fine, you pay it. Calls me back about half hour later, and he tells me that the mayor helped him out, and he really will cut through the red tape. You know, he saved Lacy Day. We would've had a big problem if we didn't have that. So I'm telling everybody in Lacy Township to go Joey Tomato's, right there on Lacy Road, okay, and tell them, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
And I have to say, through no fault of the vendors that we were supposed to have that day, the food truck vendor unfortunately broke down. He wasn't going to be able to make it to us. The ice cream truck vendor got into a car accident. So everything was a mind. It was the perfect storm. So, you know, it, it was just one of those events, you know, and during our hundred-and-fiftieth.
And, and so we don't have the other twelve pizzerias angry. We did offer.
Yes.
Because I'm working for government, and I wanna be fair to everybody, because I, I really try to patronize all our businesses. We, we offered on Facebook, we reached out. I said to Jim, I, I know you talked to our committeemen already, McDonald, who did hard work that night, and, and the other gentlemen, and Veronica, all working behind the scenes, did we offer it to everybody? He assured me, yes.
And I have to thank Lacy Chatter, because they tagged every single pizza follower, um, at Lacy Chatter, putting our message out there, so they, they couldn't say they weren't aware of it.
And it was wonderful. So thank you. Eighty-five pies times eight, my math isn't that great, but several hundred slices. And, uh, and I think you were only doing it about a dollar a slice, so it was, it was really good.
Yeah, it was for the community.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's amazing. Thank you. Item number two, Holtech Quarterly Update. Mr. Dawson?
Want this back in the middle?
Please.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd just like to provide you with an update of what we're doing at the site. As you know, we put all the fuel from wet storage into dry storage. That happened in May. It took about five months. It was the twenty-first of May that we did that. That was originally scheduled to be done in ten months. We did it in five, safely, and that's important, because it reduced the risks to the community and everything else. So that's why we pressed to get that fuel out of wet storage as soon as possible. And then what we're doing now, we're doing vessel segmentation. So it's disassembly of the reactor vessel, taking out the internals, and we're down to about the last third of the internals in the vessel and taking those out. We expect to finish that by January. Meanwhile, we're also doing some demolition. We've taken about twelve buildings down, approximately twelve buildings. Number of structures, tanks, uh, transformers have all been decommissioned and taken out of service. So we're in the demolition portion now. That work really wasn't supposed to start until two thousand twenty-four. So we pulled that up, and we're ahead of schedule on that also. All right? And just to say, about thirty percent of the waste that comes from those buildings, the interior and everything else, we're recycling. Management models in other businesses or other demolition projects was a rip and ship from a nuclear plant. They took it out, and they buried it. From an environmentally conscious standpoint, we, we're looking to recycle as much as we can, give away as much as we can to different plants, so they can reuse it, and that's gonna keep on going as we go through the project. So I expect all the ancillary buildings to be down, um, most of the combustibles, the out by the end of this year, so that'll reduce the risk of fire and also other hazards that are in sight.
I wanna thank you publicly. I, uh, had the administration of one of our senior communities reach out, speaking specifically about Seabreeze. I wanted to be able to give them, uh, forum, uh, to answer some of their concerns about safety. You met with us here in this building on very short notice, uh, with their administration. Uh, you talked about the fact that you do have an extra canister on site. It does have a neutron shield. It was a short meeting. It was very fruitful. At the end of it, I think they were satisfied. They went back and they told their folks that, and they have an active, uh, community center over there. So without that transparency and that partnership with our town, I wouldn't have been able to get that information out. So I wanna thank you and Sue and the administration you have over there for that.
Well, I appreciate that. We just wanna be transparent. We're gonna do the safest thing for the community and restore the site back so it's usable, and that's what we intend to do.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Um, you saw the fact, you responded right away when you came out about some safety problems down there. Uh, you indicated that you'd already informed us of some of those safety problems. But you were meeting with the N R C yesterday?
Um, actually, last week. We were meeting with the N R C last week.
And I know because it's safety, there are some procedures you can't tell us about for obvious reasons, so you can enlighten us as to what happened at the N R C meeting with what you can tell us.
Sure. The safety, what we talked about and what we discussed with the N R C had to do with issues of equipment from a security perspective. That's why I can't explain exactly what it was. But the equipment basically failed. We put compensatory measures in place. They felt that some of the compensatories weren't adequate, and also that we did not maintain the equipment as the way we needed to.
Okay.
All right. So we discussed that, what was going on. And just to let you know, in May twenty-first, when we went to all fuel on pad, that, all that equipment that was bad was abandoned. So we put, had compensatories in place, and that was all abandoned. Those are the things that we discussed with the N R C.
Okay.
It's, uh, basically giving them an idea of what our corrective actions were, what we did, and essentially, we put on all new security equipment.
So they were happy with your explanations and?
Um, they said they were happy. Final, uh, final verdict doesn't come out for at least six weeks, so it'll be six weeks before we get back, you're back from.
Okay. So when you hear from them, would you do the same?
I definitely will.
Thank you.
Definitely.
We have two questions. Time goes quickly. So when is the estimated, uh, like, all back to grass, if you will?
Like, all back to grass is still going to be about twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. So what we did, you have an industrial site of a hundred and fifty-two acres now. With moving all the fuel to the F C pad, we crunch that down to six acres. So now there's six nuclear-protected acres in there, and we're cleaning up the rest of the site.
And I, I would imagine so, and, you know, in the event of any redevelopment. Does it have to be all back to grass before any redevelopment commences?
No, it doesn't. No. We can release parts of the property, and, uh, as you know, we're looking at, uh, small modular reactors, batteries, different things for the property. So we continue to look at that.
Jeff, for the benefit of our residents, could you talk about your background? You said you were a intended merchant.
Marine academy, nuclear engineering, and things like that, so the folks know who you are here on TV.
Um, well, I've been at Oyster Creek for thirty-eight years. Expected to be, be there for two. I have degree in nuclear engineering.
Sounds like something like I did.
It's true. Um, I grew up in the South Bronx, didn't know about Fork River and the area. Once I came down here, it's beautiful, the beaches and everything else, and, uh, I fell in love with the area, and I've lived in Lacy now, and it's, uh, great. But my background is merchant marine, nuclear engineering degree. I've held positions in just about every department at Oyster Creek while it was operating, and now that we're in decommission.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One last thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, from a Holtech standpoint, we intend to donate a thousand dollars to each of the first responding groups. So total six thousand dollars to each of first responding groups in Lacy. We're also going to run a food drive for the Lacy Food Bank, and then donate about two thousand dollars to the food bank boss. And lastly, we're running a code campaign to, uh, with the United Way and to get codes for them and support their efforts.
Appreciate that. We'll pass that on.
Just let me know.
Thank you very much.
You will.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, chapter two sixty-one, parks' hours of operation.
All right. As you know, we have been receiving, um, several emails related to Bayfront Park in addition to about sixty-five petitions related to Bayfront Park, and it's all related to hours of operation. Our current ordinance says that all of our parks are open from dawn to dusk. So down at Bayfront Park, we have the beautiful walking path that was paid for by federal grant monies, um, that is around that park. And some of the residents get, uh, that live along there and adjacent to there get very concerned if it is dark like it is right now, out, and they're walking the path because it's adjacent to the rear of their homes. Um, the chief and I have sat down and talked. Mr. McDonald has been involved in it as well. Then we've gotten these sixty-five petitions just recently. Whereas the people, you know, sometimes after the close of their, their evening, they put their kids to bed, or they get themselves ready, they wanna go out and take a walk in the park, but they can't. And as soon as somebody steps foot in the park, whether a car is parked in the park or not, they're calling the police to have the police shut down. So it's been suggested by the chief of police that maybe we change our ordinance, and we set established times as to the times our parks are open. Let's say from five A.M. to ten P.M., and then our cops will go down and block all of the parks that are locked up. So this will stop, you know, because again, dusk is subjective, depending on the time of the year that it is. So I'm bringing this to the committee because I did supply you with all of the petitions, and as to what, um, you wanna do. I know some of you have all talked to the chief about this, and at times, we're not able at the drop of the hat to go down there and lock up that park, because we have other priority calls of service.
True.
And, um, it's, it's been really rough for the, for the cops to be down there. Those residents that live adjacent there would like a cop assigned to the walking path, walking the path, but that's just not feasible with the, um, the manpower that we have.
Mayor, if I may, go ahead.
Um, and actually, one of the times where the, down there, they, they have called the police, our, uh, sheriffs sent some, uh, police officers on bikes at dark in there. And they actually called the police on the police. So I, I kinda agree. I, I back, my house backs up to a park, and I know what it's like. Um, you know, I hear the softballs and stuff like that, and it's, it is what it is. Uh, you're gonna live on, you're gonna back up to a park, you gotta deal with some of the circumstances that, that come with it. But I think you're right. Moving it to ten o'clock at night and opening it up at five, I think is the right thing to do. It's gonna take some heat off our, our police, and we can go from there. The only other thing I can think of for down there is we either put a hedge in, which we'd have to go through the D E P to get approval to, which is gonna cost us an enormous amount of money, or a fence or some, anything we, anything we do down there, we gotta go in front of the D E P, which is gonna cost us, A, it's gonna take forever to get it done, and it's gonna open up that, that permit again, which is.
I'm not sure if that would when it comes to plantings. There are certain types of plantings that they would require, um, down there, but we may be able to put some kind of hedge up or something like that versus, um.
I, I, I think if we put the hedge up, we're gonna have screaming people here about their, they're taking their view away and so forth like that. So I think, look, I think we can try this for, make it temporary, and then come back and visit in a year till ten o'clock and see, see how that goes. And if that doesn't satisfy, satisfy it or rectify the situation, then we'll have to address it in another way.
Yeah. I support that. The only way I would ever, um, consider deviating, uh, to that suggestion would be for the one hour for spring ahead and fall back, so that residents could have that maximized. We thought about working that in. Other than that.
I don't, if we set the, if we set the time at a five A.M., it springs ahead and falls back, it's really not gonna make a difference. And if it closes at ten o'clock, I mean, I can tell you this. I back up to Hebrew Park. Outside the softball games, when I was, when it goes dark, and then there's some soccer games and stuff like that, that park is, within a half hour, it's, it's, it's gone. Now, I get it. I don't have a view of the bed, you know? So people wanna walk there, and I get that. But I can tell you this, when I'm out running in the morning, um, and I usually sometimes it's before five o'clock, I don't see anybody in that park at all.
Yeah, you're right. And, and.
So I would say five, you know, five to ten P.M. and for all our parks, we just can't do this for Bayfront. This has gotta be across the board. For Gilly, uh, you know, uh, Hebrew, all of our parks, five to ten, that takes, I think that takes the pressure off the.
I think the, the softball stays the place. The men's softball's later in ten sometimes, isn't it?
Um, we, no, we make them turn off the lights by ten P.M. there.
Yeah, the lights.
Definitely do. For the men's softball, it's because of the noise ordinance.
Yeah. Sometimes when the lights go off in the middle of an inning, they're, they're not too happy.
Yes. Are you guys all fine with it?
I'd like to hear from the, from our town folk. Anybody have any comments? Would like to take to the microphone?
I have a question from here.
Negative. You gotta come on. Sorry, not my rules.
Sorry.
Name an address, please.
Michael Sherapo, one-one-seven Station Drive, Fork River.
Are you asking a question related to this?
I have a question related to this. Um, is the rail trail considered a park? So it, does it fall under this, does it fall under this?
That's a county park, not a, not a township park.
So it doesn't fall under this ordinance?
No, it's a county park. This is only municipal parks.
Okay. Um, are you guys gonna bring up what's been going on on the rail trail lately?
We're talking about hours of operation for the parks.
I just think, I thought it connected to this, so I'm sorry.
Any other comments pertaining to this item of business? Yes, please. Name an address, please.
Uh, sure. Lisa O'Hara, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sixteen seventeen Daytona Road. Um, and I have lived there for over thirty years in that same house, so I've watched the park evolve for a very long time. And I've always spent a lot of time, you know, in, down on the beach in the park now, same, same thing. Um, I will sometimes go for a run in the morning. I will always go for a run between five and six A.M. I'm a horrible runner. I go very far. So, like, I'll, half of it is on the park. It's not that big, but it's fine for me. I don't like to be on the street. It's not safe. It's dark. People are half asleep. So at least half of the time that I'm running, walking, I'm, I'm in the park, because it's safer and it's nicer. You know, there's a great blue hair that hangs out there. It's nice. Um, the other time I tend to use it is in the evening. I work a lot of hours, fifty, sixty hours a week, stressful job. Sometimes after dinner, I wanna walk down there and sit on the bench and look out at the water. It's dark by the time I've had dinner and wanna go down there. I'm not hurting anybody. So that's my two cents. Like I said, it's, we didn't even used to have a fence at all, and there was never a problem back then. So I, I just don't see that it's a problem.
And, and one last thing. I believe, no, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
I believe that park is our least vandalized park. I think that's where we come in at that. That park's our least vandalized. So I don't think extending the hours by two hours, because it closes at eight or sunset, whatever that kid is, extending it by three hours is, is gonna make a difference. That's right.
All right. There's an order of business on the table. Committee support this suggestion? For, for, move it then.
Move second.
All right. So what we'll do is, um, I will have Mr. Connor's office draft an amending ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, for first and second reading. So if we, we'll have it for the October twenty-eighth meeting, and then, uh, we'll have a second reading in November, and, uh, I will make sure that the signs all get posted, um, at the park and obviously notify those individuals that will be locking up and opening the park with a change of hours.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number four, fundraiser at Gilly Park.
Right. So we have a gentleman in town who, um, was hurt in an, um, I'm gonna say an A T V or one of those buggy accidents out in the woods a couple of years ago. He is basically paralyzed from his neck down, and they have been trying to do some fundraising for him. He's a man without insurance, um, for some special explore joy stem cell, um, uh, process. And, um, they wanna do a fundraiser. They were looking to do it at Van Buren Park, but as you know, we are under construction at Van Buren Park. So I had suggested by the hockey rinks at Gilly Park, so they had put in a request to utilize it. They're gonna make it very family-oriented, so it's gonna be a lot of big trucks and those type of things, like what we used to do for Brody's Touch a Truck. It's gonna be very similar to this for this young, uh, young man, and they're gonna make it family-oriented and do a trunk or treat. So I just need permission to authorize that, and they're well aware that there's, if there's burnouts and problems with the trucks and all of that, that it's cut off and they're chased out.
Chief's aware?
Chief is aware, and I talked to the chief about this, and that's where he says they have to understand that this is not, you know, Lacy materials to do their burnouts and whoop-de-doo's and all that, so.
Try to help the family out. Motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Favor?
Thank you.
Item number six, meeting date change from November eleventh to November tenth.
Okay. So November eleventh is, um, the, the second Thursday in the month of November, which we would typically have a township meeting. That is Veterans Day. That is a holiday here, so I am, uh, requesting that we change the meeting to Wednesday, the tenth. Uh, Tuesday, the ninth, you guys are all busy with another meeting that he would be attending. That's the second Tuesday of the month, so I just wanted the support so I could re-advertise where. Are you guys fine with it?
Move it.
Move it.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Favor.
My favor.
Have it a tenth.
That's all I have, so if, if anybody have anything else?
Right on.
So, motion for adjournment?
Motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
Uh, second.
Favor?
All right.
Township Lacy Township Meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Adequate notice in this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll have a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
Pledge and leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, setting the salaries for the C W A union.
In ordinance of Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance titled, in ordinance of Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation for the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is for the Communication Workers of America. This is our clerical unit group. This is a contract for the years of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Those increases are zero, zero, eight, three, and three.
Move it. Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number two, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, amending chapter three thirty-five of the zoning regulations to amend the M one hundred industrial zone.
In ordinance of Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three thirty-five of the township code of the Township Lacy and Tub Zone, so as to revise the minimum required lot size in the M one hundred industrial zone and amending the zoning table number one. The M one hundred industrial zone is in the area of the Oyster Creek and Lake of the Generating Station. Right now, there is a minimum lot size of thirty acres in order to do any building out there. Um, with a few of the, uh, Orsted, Ocean Wind, those items coming in, they need only smaller lots. So we're changing the zoning from thirty acres down to five acres with the same setback requirement. Second reading, open the floor.
Seeing now, making motion to close it.
Second.
Motion on your ordinance?
Motion on the ordinance.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number three, resolution twenty twenty-one two fifty-five, amending the contract for the public defender.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending the contract with law offices of Christopher J. Dasty as public defender to add Brian R. Prancy as an additional alternate public defender. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number four, resolution twenty twenty-one dash two forty-six, appointing confidential secretary for the administrator's office.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, appointing Kimberly, Kimberly Bassoni to the position of confidential secretary in the administrator's office for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number five, resolution twenty twenty-one dash two fifty-seven, authorizing the sale of an easement on block one thousand one, lot one.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of an easement on a portion of municipal property in accordance with N J S A forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen at sec. This is on block one thousand lot one. This is the railroad right-of-way easement. Um, there is a potential, um, Ocean Wind is looking to possibly connect into the grid for the, um, turbines. They will need to, they or whoever the successful bidder is, will need to acquire an easement to do so, and under the law, we have to offer it up for bid.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number six, resolution twenty twenty-one dash two fifty-eight, awarding a contract for the purchase of natural gas.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of natural gas to U G I Energy Services LLC. We are in a Stafford Township Cooperative Purchasing System with about thirty-three other agencies. We buy items in bulk. This is for the natural gas that is delivered to the municipal facilities and, uh, and fire companies. This contract is good until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number seven, resolution twenty twenty-one dash two fifty-nine, calling the legislature, calling, should be calling on the legislature to enact revisions to the veteran and surviving spouse property tax deductions.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, calling on the New Jersey's legislature to enact revisions to veterans and surviving spouse property tax deductions.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo.
Yes. Item number eight, resolution twenty twenty-one dash two sixty, authorizing the release of site improvement performance guarantee for block one seven three four.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for harbor run phase one, conditioned upon the posting of a maintenance bond. This has been reviewed and has been recommended by the township engineer that all the performance items have been put in place. A maintenance bond will be held in place for two years. Motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
First name.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution 2021-261, authorizing cancellation of taxes for disabled veteran deduction.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2021 taxes due on a property granted to 100% disabled veterans extension and refund the resulting credit bound. This is on block 841, lot 1, and block 101.12, lot 117.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number 10, resolution 2021-262, authorizing the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This is somebody who is no longer going to be doing the project that they requested. The fee that we're refunding is $60, and this is after we take out review fees that were already done.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number 11, resolution 2021-263, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding municipal court checks.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks on the Lacy Township Municipal Court account, which is the regular account for total, two checks, total amount is $13.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number 12, resolution 2021-264, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit monies held for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number 13, resolution 2021-265, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $5,92,988.63.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, and I'm staying on D0400, that's the vendor number.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolo?
Yes. Item number 14, monthly reports.
All righty. For the month of September, the municipal clerk's office collected receipts in the amount of $3,969.61. Month of August, the municipal court collected receipts in the amount of $11,528.85. For the month of September, the recycling department collected receipts in the amount of $1,635.60 for recycling commodities, road opening permits in the amount of $4,860. Tire deposits were collected for people disposing of tires in the amount of $242, and truck parking was collected in the amount of $50. Motion to, let me make sure I don't have, motion to accept the reports is ready.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye. Item 15, motion approved township meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2021.
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Item 16, motion approved caucus meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2021.
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Item 17, motion approved membership in the Vanderlake Fire Department for Devin O'Boyle.
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Item 18, motion approved draft license application for the Loyal Order of Moose and the Rotary Club of Forked River.
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read something that, we lost a gentleman in this town that I got to know for a long time, Parker, then we knew him as Skip McClosy. I worked with him on the MUA for many years when I was a commissioner and watched the things he does. I'd just like to read his obituary so everybody can really realize what he was really about. Forked River, Arthur F. Skip McClosy of Forked River was born in Perth, Danboy on April 11th, 1937, to Frank and Kathleen Kirk McClosy. After earning a degree in economics from West Virginia, Skip spent most of his career in manufacturing and specialized in materials management, and also served in New Jersey Army National Guard from 1959 to 1965 as a tank driver and a cook. He began as a purchasing agent at Lockheed and then at Electronics Associates Incorporated in West Long Branch. He moved in moving his young family from Ford's to Forked River in 1972. He retired in 2000 from EDA as their director of material management to tend to his wife, Shirley McClosy, who battled MS for the last 20 years of her life. Skip was active in the local community throughout his residence in Lacy Township. In, in the St. Pius Parish, he organized their first carnivals and bus trips to baseball games, supported bingo, and served as an usher, most recently for the 4 p.m. Saturday mass. He was a baseball coach in Lacy Township and a member of the Lacy Yelts and the Knights of Columbus, running their cycling fundraiser for the cystic fibrosis foundation. Many knew him, knew him as a real estate agent in town and from Skip's Corner Car Cell, the newspaper and card store he owned in the late 70s and 80s, which often served as town hall discussions amongst the regular customers. He also acted in local government, serving as one of the original members of the Lacy Municipal Utilities Authority and on their executive board, as well as the Lacy Township committeemen in the 1980s. Skip spent his summers throughout his life in Forked River in the bungalow his parents owned since 1937, enjoying the golden age of activities Lake Barnigan had to offer. This led him to finding the home for his family on Deerhead Lake, which he lived in until earlier this year. Since 2011, he spent most of his summers in Beach Haven at his daughter's summer home, finding a place on the porch, often with his granddaughters, extended family, and friends. He loved organized sports throughout his life, which was likely influenced by his father, who formed the Touchin Little League and was a scout for the base, was a scout for baseball's New York Giants, whereas a young boy, Skip often watched games from the clubhouse in the Polo Grounds. In college, he managed their school's basketball and baseball team, and also managed a semi-pro football team in New Jersey. He had a passionate following for the New York Jets, owning season tickets since 1966 and organizing bus trips for every regular game in the early 70s. Due to his first stroke in late 1968, he was unable to attend Super Bowl III, the only opportunity in his lifetime to see them there. He was preceded by his parents, his sister Kathleen Joyce Ditmar, his brother Thomas Ott, and his beloved wife Shirley, 2004. He leaves behind his son Robert and his wife Kathleen, his daughter Susan and her husband Robert, and two grandchildren, Lauren and Evan. In lieu of flowers, donations in memory of Skip would be appreciated to Lacy Township EMS, Beach Haven First Aid Squad, or the National MS Society. First, I want to thank you for letting me read it about this gentleman. Like I said to you, I got to know him for many years, working with him on the MUA, and I could tell you this, he took everything he did very passionately. I mean, he watched the engineers when reports were handed in. He watched the rate payers money so good that he questioned five minutes they overcharged us when they were doing something. So to his family, God bless them, Skip's going to be sorely missed. I, I had a lot of conversations with him being on that MUA, and I'm surely going to miss him. That's on the sad note. On the happy note, I want to thank publicly Director Commissioner Gary Quinn. I had a person call me, called my cellphone, I don't know how he got it, but that's okay, I was good with it, called me and he had a problem. The gentleman lives on Beet Boulevard. When you go over to Big Bridge, the house that was in the center that had, the car ran into it. He called me, asked me to stop by, he had some issues he wanted to talk about. So I stopped by there on Sunday. I told him, he showed me different footages that he had that after that happened, he had somebody run into the mailbox, then he had somebody else ran, a truck came right up on the property and the thing. So to make a long story short, I, I knew that was a county road. I reached out to Director Quinn, and I told him of my problem. Not but the next day, he came down there. We met with the gentleman, and, and the reason why I want to thank him, because of his concern of all the years he's spent on this committee, he never forgets Lacy Township, and we had the engineers from the county go there, and there's going to be a guardrail put up where he wanted it around his property to stop it, because there is a situation. But so I want to thank him. Other than that, Mayor, I want to thank all the volunteers, all of the people that work and volunteer in Lacy Township. You're, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you do. Thank you, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And thank you for letting me read this about Skip, I appreciate that.
It's our pleasure. Committeeman McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Committeeman Juliana for reading that, the obituary for Skip. I got to know Skip somewhat, and always a true gentleman, always, always, when I was around him, a true, true gentleman, and as you can tell by the obituary, just loved his sports, and he will be sorely missed in this town. On a, and I'll go, on a sad note, and I want to warn people that we do have, actually it's a state law, I believe, that you cannot idle your car in front of convenience stores. And if you read the papers just recently, we had a situation where we had a car get hijacked, a couple of our residents, one of our residents was assaulted because we had some bad people in town. So if you're going to Wawa, and you know what, I'm guilty of it too. Turn the car off, take the keys with you, don't leave it in there, go coffee, whatever, come back out and do that. I would have prevented, prevented that. And I hate to say this, but if you're getting hijacked, give them the car. Give them the car. It's tough to do, but it's not worth your life. Car is not worth anybody's life, just get out. Okay, that's my little soapbox on that. We opened the, what was the old Knights of Columbus building, which is now our new town's, what's it called?
The Charles A. Smith Community Center.
Community Center down there. It is gorgeous, so put together a shindig or something and go rent it. How many spaces can we rent out there at one time?
The main hall will fit 250 people, and the two smaller rooms will be 50 people each.
So we could have multiple events down there. So, and, and our public works just did a wonderful, wonderful job with that, so I just want to congratulate them on that. 150th anniversary is continuing, it's winding down as the year winds down. We've got the Halloween, what's it called, Pete, the Fear Trail, Trail Fear?
I should know, because I'm acting in it, so I'm sorry.
Nightmare at Hebrew Park.
Nightmare at Hebrew Park. It's for all ages, so go have a good time and see if you can figure out who, who the mayor is. Last year, what were you, last year, were you the coach?
I was the coronavirus.
You were the coronavirus. So, so go ahead out there and enjoy, pick the kids out there. I want to thank Holtech for their generous donations to this township. They have been very good to this township since we had that meeting about three years ago, two years ago, whatever it was. They have been, their communication has improved greatly, and we know what's going on down there. We have access, they answer the phones and so forth. And obviously, some of the stuff, when we ask questions, they can't tell us for obvious reasons, but as you saw, Mr. Dostal, he worked around it to night and did a good job. And last but not least, I do want to thank Joey Tomatoes. I can't thank them enough. Lacy Day was phenomenal, and it would have been not as good had we had the problems we had, not had the food trucks. For him to come in, and he did that, Pete, what time did you contact him?
Right about the time that.
About eight o'clock?
About eight o'clock.
Five, yeah, probably between five and eight, we were like.
Think about, between five and eight on a Friday night, which is probably one of his busiest nights, this man was able to turn around and he brought 85 pies by noon, right? They were there by noon.
Yeah.
Noon the next morning, so you know he got in early, did what he said, he said he did it for the community. So I'm going to encourage everyone to get over Joey Tomatoes and spend some money in that store. So, Mayor, that's all I have.
As a short addendum to Committeeman's comments, 85 pies is 680 slices, so he did some work all night long.
And think about that, how long does it take to cook a pie? Five hour, five minutes?
Probably 10 to 12 minutes.
10 to 12 minutes? That's, and what he's, I've been in that store, he's got maybe room for five pies at a time? Think about that.
Committeeman Kenneth.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to offer my condolences to the McClosy family. Skip served on the township committee, was an outstanding citizen to Lacy Township, and for many years, he volunteered, continued to volunteer his time. It's always sad when those old timers pass, because they lose so much of the history and knowledge of the town that goes with them. So again, my condolences. And since we are in election season, I wanted to remember to write a statement just to remind the voters that the ballots do go out early, and, but I did specifically want to remind everybody that this year, we have a choice for governor, and I would like to remind our voters that last April and May, at the height of pandemic, while you were home following the governor's orders of not allowing groups of 25 or more people to congregate together outside, our governor thought it was okay to march in a protest march. Additionally, to the many small businesses in our township, our governor thought it was not okay for you to be open, yet the Walmarts and Home Depots in the world were able to do whatever they wanted. So as exec, I was mayor last year, and as the executive orders were issued, we did our, the best that we could to follow those executive orders. But I do not respect the man, and I will not be voting for him. Those are my comments, Mayor.
I thank you. Thank you very much. I want to echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues up here. I did not know Mr. McClosy all that well. Whenever I had questions, I went through our good friend and then our liaison to the MUA, Deputy Mayor Juliana, and I'm very sorry for the loss to hear some of his stories here tonight. I know he was a longtime resident of our town, and I'm sorry for the, for the family members, and I, I hope you find some peace in his good reputation. I also want to thank Jeff Dostal for the Holtech coming out here, reporting, meeting with me and others on the committee whenever needed, for transparency for our residents and our seniors, and for his donations. In some of the same vein of the comments you heard here tonight, I wanted the people to know, I'm continuing our advocacy for our taxpayers and our businesses, speaking at a regional economic forum in mid-November to just advocate with some of our other mayors, and Mayor Tom River will be there, and Mayor Berkeley as well. So this is so important, because unfortunately, and this is the people's seat, so I don't make any political statements up here, but math is math, and what Committeeman Kenneth said is true. There were favorites that were picked, and their mom and pop stores, I'm glad that Tomatoes was here. Tomatoes is a small pizzeria. They may not have been here. At one time, I had a comment up here when I was deputy mayor last year, SeaWorld was open, but I couldn't get a sandwich at a deli on Lacy Road. I just think that's inherently unfair, and I would say the same thing if there was someone I just think that's inherently unfair and I would say the same thing if there was someone from my party in the State House. So, I think reasonable people are reasonable when it comes to reasonable items. I wanted to advocate for our seniors. If you read Jersey Shure online or the Esberry Park Press, I got a call from Commissioner Vicari about some banks closing in Berkeley Township as well as Barnigan. I immediately called all of our banks in our, our township here, uh, and I was comforted. Not only are, are banks staying here, uh, our Ocean First Bank is increasing its footprint, hiring people and going to take some depositors from Berkeley branch and a Barnigan branch. Uh, so, our seniors rely on hand-to-hand banking because they have challenges with some technology, as do I. But unfortunately, because I have a teenager in my house, seniors may not have that. Uh, so, it's good to see that our, our banks are staying here. In fact, when I called up one of our banks, one of our banks offered to go out with our chief and to, uh, show anyone in our town, uh, either in one of our venues or in either of our two senior venues, the latest scams because they are abound and seniors are getting victimized and ripped off. So, I did reach out to the, the chief, asked the chief to reach out to this particular banking individual and I'm hopeful that the two can put their, uh, minds together from a business and law enforcement standpoint, uh, for the benefit of our residents. I've been to those before that the chief presented and, uh, they're wonderful. Um, I would also like to end closing, uh, say that I'm going to be presenting at the Ocean County Mayor's Association, the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. What I'm going to do is offer, uh, each municipality and our, our employees here. Uh, I'm going to get some nurses out to town hall. If anyone needs finger stick glucose, anyone has issues or, or problems that they need to talk to a psychologist, psychiatrist, LCSW about, uh, we do a lot from the County Health Department and we're going to extend that to our municipalities all around the county and, uh, I'm hopeful that we take advantage of it right here, uh, for our residents here. So, maybe they could save them a trip to the doctor. We're going to have registered nurses everywhere, uh, and that's a real value add, uh, for our people that work very hard and, uh, thank the County Health Department for that. That will conclude my comments and I will open the comments up to the floor. Any comments, please?
Just, uh, item three from the caucus meeting, Mr. McDonald made a comment. If you remember in the old days when they had the old wooden gazebo over there at that park, it was vandalized constantly. Now with the extra lighting and stuff, you know, you see almost nothing, you know, like that going on over at the, at the Bayfront Park. So, just wanted to reinforce you on that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
One second. How did, how did the Relay for Life go? It was the same day as, if I remember correctly?
We canceled.
Oh, you canceled?
We canceled because we have this survivor lunch.
Okay.
And with what was going on in Ocean County at the time, we felt better to not bring people being treated for cancer together.
Sure. Let's hope, let's hope you can do it.
It's two years in a row now, I'm not really depressed.
Yeah, let's hope we can.
Hopefully, I'm knocking on wood next year.
I hope you have it next year.
Yeah, I hope you have it next year. Just, just remember that Lacy Day is, is the last Saturday of September.
Well, they, they, actually, we moved us, we were, we usually do it in, in, uh, June.
Right.
And because of this.
Right.
We switched to that.
Okay. Glad to hear that.
Thank you, Barry. Any other comments, please? Yes? Name and address, please.
Amanda Brown, two oh eight Lakeview Court, Fork River. Uh, I'm coming up here and representing a whole bunch of citizens in the town specifically around the rail trail. Um, I've lived here for twenty-four years. I've had five children go through the school system, some are still in. Uh, the, the train bridge has become a hangout for the people who have addiction problems, to put it nicely. We see overdoses, we see intoxic, highly intoxicated people over there. Families cannot go over there and bring their kids to fish. They're drunk as heck, they're throwing up all over the place, they're sleeping on the benches. My daughter was involved in a situation last week where one of the men harassed her and her friends up at Wawa. Now, I know this man because I walk my dogs every day, twice a day, in that common area. The woman that was here with the little girl lives at the end of the street. We're afraid to even let our kids go outside because of these people. They're dangerous. The police are called at least once a week to that spot. I apologize for getting passionate about this, but just understand that I used to bring my adult stepchildren to that train bridge and we would fish all the time. I can't take my kids there, no one can take their kids there. There are grown men that live in my cul-de-sac that will not walk through that area. They walk all the way around with their dog by the basketball courts because that spot is a hangout and they converge and there's four or five of the same people over and over and over. One of the gentlemen now, the one that harassed my daughter and her friends is now in jail on other stipulations, four driving stipulations. He's in jail, he has not been released. I am asking for your help, everyone that's in the area who can't be here tonight because they're with their kids. And I'm talking, if I got a petition, you'd have hundreds of signatures, not just of people who live directly in that area, but everyone that walks that trail. I carry mace on me wherever I go now, when I'm walking my dogs, daytime, nighttime. My kids are afraid to get on and off the bus without me there. They're old enough to get on and off the bus by themselves, but I won't let them do it now and they're scared to death.
Let me interrupt you.
I know it's a county property.
No, 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 I want to say this, I'm aware. I hear your comments, it's heartbreaking. I'm not going to give you any platitudes, I'm going to own it and take responsibility for it, whether it's a county problem or not. I ever hear somebody with a little girl, a little boy, that's afraid to go fishing on that bridge where I take my daughter fishing.
There's a lot.
Or I have in the past. I'm meeting with the chief, I'm going to be meeting with the commissioners, I'm also meeting with Sheriff Mastinardi.
I appreciate that.
I'm also on the Human Service Advisory Committee for the County of Ocean, it is a commissioner-appointed board for those folks that are homeless or suffering an addiction. I have access because of where I sit on that board and where I am employed to a multitude of prevention and treatment options for people, housing for people, cold, uh, what do we call it, the, the, the cold zone housing?
Cold blue.
Cold blue, cold blue. When it gets, it falls under thirty-two degrees, we have housing for the folks. There's no reason somebody should be hanging out there if they're having a hard time. We don't hold homelessness against them, we don't hold addiction against them. Where I draw the line is if somebody bothers your kid.
And it's not just my kid. I mean, there's grown people who ride their bikes past there and, and they put their feet out to trip people, like.
Having that meeting this week, that is unacceptable in our town. The commissioner knows about it, I spoke about it with him and the chief, those, there is help for those folks. They need to access that help. It's taxpayer-funded pathways for them to get housing, treatment, and shelter and food.
Mayor, if I may, um, I got a phone call, this is about three weeks ago, from Commissioner Quinn. Uh, he, uh, Mr. Sheriff Mastinardi, uh, and one of his sergeants, Mr. Reed was invited back there and we walked that trail.
It's filthy, in that spot. There's all kinds of.
We walked the trail. Uh, we are, they went in and talked to the manager of Wawa because he's got to do some cleaning up on that end of it too. Uh, the sheriff is aware of it, okay? We have, it, we're not, we're not the only town that has a problem.
I, I understand that.
Berkeley and Waretown.
I understand that.
So, there's a joint effort going on.
I understand that.
And we are doing more and more things on that. I can't tell you what they are for obvious reasons.
On it, right.
And we are, we're doing, matter of fact, we have ATVs down on that trail right now.
I, I did see them today. So, I did want to say that to you guys, that I did see people there today.
This is not something that, that, uh, we're ignoring, we're addressing it as best we can and since it's the county, the sheriff has to take the lead on this.
I, I understand that.
And he is, he's taking, he's there right now.
The chief, the chief, the chief, I talked to the chief about this, he's aware of it, he's very happy with the support he's getting from the, uh, are this Township Committee with regards to that, he's happy with, and I know the Berkeley chief and the Ware Town chief are very happy about this. This is, this is a problem, it is being addressed, give us some time.
Uh, okay.
The whole thing is, I can just say this, we're going to make it very uncomfortable for them. That's the only thing I can tell you.
I, I just want to say a few more comments. I, I'm grateful for everything that you've said, but I just would like to make a couple more comments. One being, with all due respect, Mr. Giuliano, you know I love your family.
Mm-hmm.
But I do know that your family owns, someone in your family owns the Spirits Liquor Store.
Yes.
And I am begging you to please do something so that there, these people go up there three times a day and get more liquor. I, I know it because I watch them, I'm just, I, like I said, with all due respect.
I will respond back.
Please, I, I would really appreciate it if they would stop serving these people. They're the same four people, they've got to know that they've had problems. So, that's just one thing I wanted to say, you can respond in a second. The other thing I want to say is, you know, it, it's one thing to, to not be able to go up there and fish, but it's another thing when these people are also, they were called the other day, last week, and one of the gentlemen who was the problem gentleman actually pulled a knife on the police officers that responded. I cannot, and these families cannot, forget the adult people who, adult men who will not go to that spot, adult women who are afraid to walk in the morning. I see them walk around. So, I just need you to know, it's not just people with families, it's everybody that loves to use that trail.
I want to give you one quick update. You brought up something, uh, about a business, absolutely not, uh, anything Mr. Giuliano is involved with. There was another business over there that was, uh, maybe giving coffee and doing some other things for some of those folks. They've been asked to cease and desist. I will get another follow-up phone call tonight at the conclusion of the meeting. Before nine o'clock, I will call the sheriff on his cell phone to get an update. I'm informed that the sheriff's officers are down there right now.
I have also seen county vehicles pull in and they, in the past few weeks, and they haven't even gotten out of their car. I'm just saying. I, I do know that today I did see the, the police on, on the ATVs or their bicycles. That was great, but last week, I even have the date, but it's in my phone, two vehicles, county vehicles pulled up, one was a truck, one was a car, and I watched them. I walked my dogs for fifteen, twenty minutes and they never even got out of their vehicle to walk to the bench.
Was it the sheriff or was it the park, park rangers?
I think it was.
It's park and, and the county security.
Okay.
So, again, I'm grateful, I see things happening, I don't know what needs to happen, cameras, what, whatever you guys need to do. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to voice for all of the citizens of the town.
I don't want my, and I, I, I don't speak for the other gentleman up here. I don't want my legacy to be here in November twenty twenty-one when I was mayor and I was fortunate enough to be put here by the people.
We appreciate everything that you're doing for the town, by the way.
Somebody's going to get hurt over there, one of our, our people in our town, because it could easily be me and my daughter fishing from that bridge because we've been there. So, I'm going to tell you, if I have to drive down there myself, if I'm going to call the sheriff on his cell phone, I'm going to talk to the authorities that have jurisdiction. We will get this fixed.
Thank you.
Because I don't want anyone, anyone hurt over there. That is not fair to taxpayers. Feel for the people with addiction and homelessness.
I, I do too.
There are pathways.
I have nothing against those people other than the fact that they're acting inappropriately.
They have, as before, before it becomes fourteen degrees out, they have to accept that help. And where, where my feeling for them will wane is if they make your life miserable, they have no right to do that. And I'm telling you, because I know you'll come back here and call me out.
Oh, I will, you know I will. I'm running for school board too, so.
I'm going to stay on that?
I'm not a quiet person.
Staying on that?
Thank you.
I don't want to hear on my watch, one person getting hurt over there. That, I will take personally as an affrontery.
It's been very close many times, just saying.
I'm on it.
Thank you.
And I will tell you I'm on it.
Now, I'm going to respond to you.
Go ahead, Mr. Giuliano.
Um, I'm going to explain to you a little bit about Spirits Unlimited.
Okay.
Um, number one, I'm the head of HR for the company, um, and I have other different roles with the company, which you are right. Um, I'm going to tell you that we got a phone call about the situation. Um, we took care of it that day, that morning. I had the police down there, we escorted this gentleman off of there. Um, and I want to let you understand something. Out of probably, and, and I'm not trying to be the, I have to tell you, and any liquor store chain in Ocean County, we are probably the best. We have all of our people.
I don't doubt that.
Tip-certified, let me finish, we have them tip-certified. We do not serve people that come in that store that, and, and I could tell you this, since I've been with the company for eight years now, okay, we have not had one violation. I could tell you many more have, we have not. We follow all the rules of the ABC. Uh, I went to school to learn the laws of the ABC, so we do not serve people and if somebody keeps on coming in there more than once a day, they are flagged. And I could tell you that because I have a camera system that's hooked up to my laptop that I watch it all the time, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you didn't know, that's all. I'm just begging for any help that I can get and you know I love your family. I mean, our sons played baseball together, so, you know.
It's, it's all good, but I want, I, and I, and I am sticking up for Spirits Unlimited because I am part of it. Uh, we are that, we, we took it into our hands right away when.
I'm glad to hear that.
The gentleman was sleeping on our property, okay? That morning, and I got up out of bed at six-thirty in the morning to go there, to meet the police officer there, to escort the gentleman off there. Yes, the gentleman got other complaints from us because he was harassing our help, harassing Jersey mics.
Mm-hmm.
So, we signed complaints against him also as the owner of the mall. We did that and yes, he was arrested and, and brought to there. Um, but, just so you know, we're.
Thank you.
We're on top of it.
Okay, thank you, great. I, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Next. Any other comments from the floor? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
You know, I'm Robert Brown, live at four forty-nine Lake Barnigan Drive South. I can't even go down a rail trail anymore because of this person. Cup time, you run my stomach. I almost wanted to punch him for that, but I didn't.
You're looking at it, but you, you got to handle that.
I know.
You got to handle it, right?
Yep, not go down there.
Well, until the situation is, is handled, I probably would tell you not to antagonize the situation or anything, that's why I'm just recommending that to you, I'm not telling you not to do it.
I know. And I bought a fisherman's license to the street to go down there and now I can't even go down with my brother.
I think it'll be handled quite quickly. I think you'll see something happen quite quickly and it'll be rectified.
If anything, Sheriff Mastinardi is very good at his job.
Yes.
And will make sure that.
Okay, thank you.
There was multiple, they said Berkeley, Lacy, and Ware Town were joining forces.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, you said he touched you, anybody lays their hand on you, you call the police. You don't have to put up with that. That's the end of that story.
Okay, next time he does that, I'll call.
No, and people communicate, they don't lay hands, that's not acceptable behavior of a five-year-old.
For me, because like I said, he has, he has a habit of sticking his feet out when people are riding past on their bikes too. It's very dangerous, it's a very dangerous situation.
Mr. Brown, let me, let me tell you something else, which I forgot. Um, it just wasn't Spirits Unlimited, this gentleman was doing.
I'm sure it's not.
I mean, he went from up to Bayville, right on down the line to Ware Town, across over to here, so it wasn't just Spirits Unlimited. We did something about it.
I'm, again, I'm grateful and, and very happy to hear that. Thank you so much, Mr. Giuliano.
Any other comments? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Hello, Gavin Rozzy, Lakeview Court, Forked River. Um, unfortunately, I'm here for the same reason tonight, I'm going to add to the chorus of residents speaking up about this issue. Um, you know, certainly, we appreciate everything that's been done thus far. Uh, I was on my bike today, I saw two Ocean County Sheriff's Officers going around there, so it's certainly good to see more of a presence. Um, unfortunately, I have another experience with, uh, this individual that's been mentioned tonight. Uh, in late June, I was riding my bike like I usually do and, uh, I, I was really taken aback when this gentleman started throwing punches at me. Um, and it could have been a dangerous situation. I was approaching the bridge, if I were to have fallen off the bike, I could have had a, a pretty severe injury. Um, in another instance, I witnessed the same individual, um, committing acts of domestic violence against his, his girlfriend or companion. So, you know, certainly, we need to get people help, but when they refuse help, it becomes even more problematic. So, we certainly appreciate everything you're doing to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other com, yes, sir?
Michael Kusniewski, thirteen Penn Police. Uh, relatively new to town, it's been a little less than two years. Uh, my house does back up to Railroad Avenue and the Home Depot. Just wondering if something could potentially, I don't know if this is the right forum, be done to get speeds to be reduced on Railroad Avenue. I have a three-year-old and a ten-month-old baby who are woken up multiple times in the middle of the night by cars. Literally, I've seen personally through the trees, street racing, two cars at the same time.
Posted at thirty-five there?
I believe it's twenty-five.
You can't go any lower than twenty-five.
No, I was thinking maybe speed bumps or something in, in to that nature. I've seen cars literally street racing, um, trucks going fifty, sixty miles an hour. There's burnout marks all over the place, it's like a free-for-all. I get it, I was a kid at one time, but to have my three-year-old come in my room at four o'clock in the morning because the cars are loud again, it's getting really old, so.
I have talked to the chief about that.
Okay.
Um, I got to follow up with him as to how he wants to handle this because I'm on the other side of that and I can hear him, Ryan, they wake me up. So, I can understand your situation here. I did talk to the chief about it. I'll follow up with him and see what he wants to do about it. We have to get some people out there at night and stop this because it's usually on a Friday night, if I'm not mistaken, if I think.
I mean, Fridays are definitely busier.
Yeah, and it's usually late, like ten-thirty at night, they start and it doesn't stop.
Like, I, I work in law enforcement too, I get it, you know, resources are limited and stuff like that, but it's, it's interrupting my family's sleep.
Sure.
I have a baby, I have a three-year-old, she's tired, she can't go to preschool at Los Angeles in the morning because she's so exhausted from getting, it's, I understand it's not the biggest problem in the world, but.
No, we'll get the chief on it.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I don't know if something could be done, maybe TPW, put speed bumps or something. It's pretty straightforward, that whole entire road.
We'd have to go back to DEP to ask for all of that, and that was such a cantankerous permit to get to build the road there. And they also dictated the speed on that road as well. So we'd have to reopen our CAFR permit to do that. Maybe increasing street lighting, because I think it's minimal, street lighting there. That was part of one of the things. If we can get additional street lighting, it would draw attention, obviously, to people and it wouldn't be so dark there. Maybe they wouldn't do that.
Yeah. I don't know if something, I don't know if speed bumps are an option or whatever, but...
Well, we have to really regrade the whole entire road and rebuild the road in order to have the drainage and the flow done properly in order to put speed bumps there. And sometimes they cause more harm than they do good because we've seen, you know, there's, in towns that do have it, there are increased insurance liability plans for people that disobey it, hit it, and then it's the town's fault, of course.
Yep.
It may not be the most, it's visible. It may not be the greatest deterrent, but to have one of those signs that tell you your speed.
Yeah.
Here's the bottom line. You got a three-year-old. You pay taxes to live there in, in a nice part of town. Somebody's drag racing, that's a five-point reckless. I know, because back in the day in the 80s, I used to drag race. I got a couple of them.
Can I ask you, when you say trucks, what kind of trucks are you talking about?
Um, so...
F-150s, 250s, are you talking about?
What it sounds like, it sounds like turbo diesel.
Okay. So you're not talking about delivery trucks from Kohl's or Home Depot?
I'm talking about like...
Okay, because they're not allowed in that.
The trucks with the hot body exhaust, like smoke people a lot.
All right. So you're talking about your typical...
I know the sound of Subaru. I hear Subaru go fly. It's got to be doing 75 miles an hour. I'm not even kidding.
So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't delivery trucks, because that's definitely a no.
I'm going to be talking with the chief tomorrow. That's an enforcement issue.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Any, yes, please.
Hi. I'm Katie. I'm at 328 Station Drive. I was here to support about the rail trail because it's definitely a concern, especially with the baby on the way. You know, we like to fish in that area. I don't want any safety concerns. But he actually brought up another issue that I've been having is speeding. So Station Drive, I don't know if that's close to where...
I would second that, and they go flying past the bus stops, too. Like, the bus lights will be on and people just fly right by.
Station?
Station. So I'm at, like, the Station Drive, like, by the rail trail, and then also it curves around, and I'm Station Drive, like, by Lakeside North.
I will tell you, we will have all...
And that little, like, intersection is always a problem. Like, I don't know if a light could be put in there where, like, Lakeside Drive meets in, because my neighbor has had, like, his fence.
Lakeside Drive meets with where? With Station?
So there's Station, there's Lakeside, and then there's the Lakeside North, I guess, that turns into...
Okay. That's all county-controlled, so the county would be the ones that would make the determination whether or not a street light would go in on a residential street there, not the, the town. While we enforce traffic control and speeding, which we can definitely look into, but a letter would have to be sent to the county to see if it warrants a traffic light. And in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I doubt we're going to see that.
Well, I mean, it's a pretty busy road.
Yeah, but I doubt, I doubt, I doubt you're going to see that there.
Well, can, can, you know, put that on the list to talk to the police about the speed?
I will assure you, you're going to have a long conversation with the chief tomorrow.
Okay.
It's going to happen.
Thank you.
I wrote it all down.
Can I just say one more name in relation to that?
Name and address one more time for the record.
Amanda Baron, 208 Lakeview Court. So at that area where I am, between the rail trail and where Station Drive, like, comes to the T and then you have to go to the right to go by the lake there, people, like, fly in the morning in that spot. I know that the police are understaffed.
Coming from Route 9 or going to Route 9?
Both ways. It's, it's, it's horrific.
So that's around the bend?
Around the bend, yeah. And then she's further down.
Mr. Cornelius or...
I'm sorry?
That little white house is right on the corner around that bend, right?
Uh, yes. There is a little white house there on, on the bend. And so, like I said, I know the police department's understaffed, but I do know that they do sit, you know, if you, you go the back way to the parkway and you take Lakeside Drive North off of Deerhead to, to go out to Newark and then go to the light and make, right, but I know they sit in those, some of those side streets there. Maybe if they, once in a while, came over to Station Drive, they would catch a hell of a lot of people. I'm just saying. And I've actually stepped out into the street to stop people because my daughter was getting off the bus and coming across and people are just, like, like, the bus isn't even there. The lights are on, the stop signs out. I mean, it's crazy. Like...
I find it unbelievable how people are so eager to what you're supposed to do when a bus being stopped.
So again, I mean, you know, it is a residential area. I, I don't honestly know what the speed limit is on that one specific little spot, but if you had someone sitting in the grassy knoll, which we call it, a police officer, I guarantee you, they'd be busier than they could even write tickets or type fast. So...
Did I hear you say there was a bus stop there for trucks?
Yes. There is a bus stop on the corner of Lake, Lakeview Court and Station Drive, and there's another one on the corner of Oak Street and Station. That's where both of my daughters get on and off the bus, and, and it's just crazy. And there's...
Say it one more time. Lakeview and?
Station.
Lakeview and Station Drive.
And then Station and Oak.
State, yeah. That's like middle school and, and, you know, elementary school. There's also another one a couple houses down for the elementary school on Station Drive, past Oak Street, before you get to the T.
Should absolutely be able to get a black and white out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
In the morning and in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Find out when the bus is let out and know when they pick up.
Yeah. I mean, even if you had somebody there seven o'clock, like, you know, people going to work and coming home from work, like, it's busy. It's busy. It's very busy.
I, I can't promise that we'll have a sit over there.
That's fine.
And every person in the town is going to want a police officer to...
I understand. I understand.
We are going to get somebody over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other comments? For the good of the order.
I'll, I'll, I'll. Sorry, I was up there. I reached out to the county park system...
Name and address at the microphone, please.
Sure. Mike Kuslawski, 13 Penn Police. I reached out to the county park system via Facebook about security along the rail trail and potentially asking them to put up security cameras. And they said they would forward to the people in charge and get back to us. So I don't know if that found up ears. It was about a week ago, so obviously no...
That probably goes to the sheriff's department, and then, of course, he needs to ask for that during budget time, his capital expenses, and, you know, that cycle doesn't start until January.
So I did at least put that out there for security cameras installed sporadically. We'll see what happens.
Thank you.
There's a camera there, buddy.
Is there a camera there already?
Yeah. Cameras on, there's cameras on the trail. Once more for the good of the order.
I would just like to...
Name and address.
My name is Erin Nunn. I live at 141 Station Drive, so in the same area with the rail trail. And the people that have been congregating over there recently have been very concerning. I used to walk that trail daily. I have four dogs, so we love, you know, walking the trail. And I'm, I'm upset because I, I don't feel comfortable walking down there with my daughter and even with my dogs. Like, I'm just not comfortable. Most recently, walking down that trail, I had one gentleman yelling at me that my dog bit him, which is not true. My dog never bit him unless he wandered in my backyard and I didn't know about it. But, you know, coming at me and yelling at me about, you know, my dog would make my dog bite him. So that's, you know, concerning is a lot of alcohol or intoxication. It seems like, I'm not really certain, but definitely concerning. So it would be nice if something, you know, a presence, more of a presence was there.
Well, I, I could tell you this. I don't, I don't play favorites, but you have a little girl and so do I, and you know how to get to me.
Yeah.
So I will not let anything happen to that child. I'm going to tell you that right now here on TV. I, I won't let anything happen to any child in our town. And I have this conversation with the chief. Folks can, folks can come where they want. They can't live where they want, and they can't hurt or terrorize our people. There will be consequences. You know, if it was the old days, this is going to make the newspaper. So here's where the attorney just nudges me with his right elbow and tells me to, to shut up. If it was the old days, don't worry about it.
Okay.
If it was the old days, there'd be, it might be a U-Haul going down there and whoops some people out. But it's not the old days. It's 2021, so we're going to do it the right way.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I feel bad that, you know, whatever's going on, obviously people have an issue, but, you know, even just more of a presence there so that I can feel comfortable walking down, um, the trail. I mean, would be nice. I, I have seen today a lot of police officers over there, which is amazing. During, you know, the whole pandemic thing, when it initially started, there was a lot of police officers keeping people off the trail.
Right.
It would be nice if they were there regularly so that, you know, you just had a certain level of comfort, you know? Even maybe some lights over there would be a great improvement. But I thank you for your time.